The first item on the agenda is citizen input. Do we have any citizen input?
Role call.
May I take the role?
I'm sorry. Yep.
Okay.
Role call.
Councilor Dionne? Councilor Libby LeBeau?
Here.
Chair for River?
Here.
Is there any citizen input? No?
I have none.
The minutes to the February 2nd meeting?
Motion approved or adopted?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number three, I'm sorry. Item number three is minutes to the April 14th meeting.
Motion adopt?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number four is a communication from One South Coast Chamber, the Fall River Arts and Cultural Plan, Viva Fall River. I know I did speak to Mr. Sullivan from the Chamber and also to Mrs. Castro, and it was felt that we should perhaps table this as they are in line of hiring an individual who would be better at coming and giving us the plan of the Arts and Culture Plan in Viva Fall River.
Did they give you a timeline?
They said probably within the month.
Okay. Do you want to motion to table?
Motion to table. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item five on the agenda is a resolution regarding a public arts policy. So, a public arts policy was referred to the City Council, was submitted through the City Council through Mrs., to Councilor Dionne, and it was referred to the Economic Development Committee. Even though it's an ordinance, it was referred here for us to kind of look at it and tweak it. We have had a meeting on it, and Attorney Seth Atkins, who's here today, has had an opportunity to meet with all parties to try to come up with what would be an arts policy. So, at this point, anyone who would like to speak on that, in favor, against? The microphone is there. We've kind of separated ourselves a bit, but I know that there's people that wanted to speak on it. So, is there anybody? Any proponents to it that would like to speak on it?
Let me just say that...
Okay. Could you just state your name and address for the record?
Yes. My name is Sandy Fraz. I have a law office at 345 North Main Street and a residence on Robeson Street. The reason that I wanted to talk about this is primarily, I'm not saying I'm either for it or against it at this point. What I think, based on my 30 years plus on the State Cultural Council, which essentially is a planning agency, even though it gives out hundreds of millions of dollars in grants, it's always viewed itself as being primarily a planning agency. Through that experience, I really came to understand what goes into a cultural planning Next month, or when FRAC is ready to go through what their plans are, then I think you'll have a, you'll have a good chance to understand the really comprehensive long-term planning process that set the foundation for where FRAC is now. Now, the only comment that I have about any cultural or public art project is that beware, because few things can be more polemic and more controversial and generate as much vitriol as public art. Quite often because public art expresses the vision of the artist, which may not be understood or even accepted by the general population. Just to give you two examples, Pablo Picasso did a, an amazing sculpture for one of the meeting places, Daily Plaza in Chicago. Nobody understood what it was. Nobody understands much of what Picasso paints. But in any event, what happened is there was this huge controversy, and it generated so much ill feeling that even Picasso said, "I won't take any money for this." So, they got it for nothing. Now, fast forward, we have at, at Bicentennial Park, we have two of the most well-known and famous examples of war memorials. And they, they couldn't be more stark in their different visions. What do you have? First, you have the Uojima statue, which portrays what the population wants to see and remember about war, which is the bravery and the valor. So, after Vietnam War, a commission made up of, of cultural professionals put together a proposal, or a, an RFP. And out of that RFP came a proposal from a young architect, Maya Lin. And that is the Vietnam War. What does the Vietnam War portray? It portrays what I think is the essence of war, which is death. And there was a huge reaction to that as well, from a political committee that had been established under Ross Perot, to also review the proposals for the Vietnam Memorial. And they insisted that there be a change to the design. And that change to the design, then, had three soldiers, which they put off a short distance away from the wall memorial. And they insisted, this political group, that that be part of the Vietnam Memorial. So, that, those are just two examples of what you may be walking into. And my only reaction to what is before you now is that it seems to me that the proposal is in many ways backwards. I think before any proposal is submitted to this council, it really should be the result of a long-term planning process. What do I mean by that? I mean, first of all, there has to be some initiative on the part of the council and the mayor's office that this, in fact, is a good idea. They should be thinking about it before anything is submitted. And then, if the ultimate decision-makers decide that it is a good idea, then perhaps do what FRAC did. When we were going to develop our cultural plan, the first thing we did was hire a professional consultant to do the RFP, to make sure that was done right. Once that was done right, then we also put together a competition among many different consultants to actually do the plan. We got, I think, five or, five or six proposals from highly competent people. We chose one, and the result, after a year, was a 97-page plan, the most important part of which is, during the planning process, you get a chance to work together so that everybody buys in, and in the end, it's something that everybody can agree to before you launch it publicly. So, that really is my comment, where I'm coming from. I'm not saying that a public art commission is a good idea or a bad idea. It may very well be a good idea, but I don't think you can do it without a comprehensive planning process.
Thank you, Attorney Fraz.
Brittany? We had, we had...
Is there anybody else?
Yes.
Speak on it.
Hi. My name is Brittany Harvey. I'm the co-founder, co-director of the Fall River Museum of Contemporary Art that opened October 2020, so in the midst of the pandemic. Also an artist myself, I've shown internationally. I'm based here in Fall River. I own a house on Walnut Street, and I grew up in this area. So, I've had, you know, the past 15 years of my life has been various cultural projects around this area in the contemporary art realm. And so, the Fall River Museum of Contemporary Art, now that I co-direct with my husband, Harry, we're very focused on the community, and we've been working with the Fall River Public Schools, as well as some classes at UMass Dartmouth and Roger Williams University, also talking at RISD. So, very intertwined with the local institutions, those arts conversations. I also, aside from all of my art involvement, I'm, my full-time day job is for the federal government as a contract specialist for the Navy. So, I kind of see both sides of the conversation. I, you know, first and foremost, support artists and their freedom to, the freedom of expression, which is, you know, it's a unique thing here in the United States. So, I also see the side of federal regulation and policy, and how the kind of over-bureaucratizing of those things can really hinder equality and freedoms. So, along with what Sandy Fraz said, I agree that I think there should be a more in-depth planning process for something like this. Just immediately looking over the initial policy, I questioned the committee members and how those decisions were made. As someone who's very integrated into the art community here in Fall River, I certainly would love to have, you know, input into this process as well. And we've actually been in talks with the Olmstead Now nonprofit or Coalition in Boston, looking at how we could potentially do some public art programming here in the Olmstead Parks in Fall River. And we just have very fluid conversations going on around really positive potential projects. So, you know, I think to jump to implementing a policy and committee like this would really potentially hinder the, the progress that's already kind of being made. And we definitely would like a seat at the table in those discussions, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Fraz.
Sorry, I just prepared a note, so I apologize if I'm going to be reading.
That's okay.
But I stand here...
Just your name?
Yeah, Michael Benavides. I'm a business owner in the city through All Your Marketplace, and then I'm also the founder of a festival called Fabric Arts Festival. So, and Fabric Arts Festival is a multi-disciplinary art festival with substantial community and international support that has completed three additions in the city of Fall River. Fabric has, has been responsible for most of the murals that now adorn this city, including the recent Viva Fall River mural seen on the highway on the K Building. We have also created other public artworks, such as architectural installation by International Artist Collective Wizdea on the Quicheshan River Rail Trail. We are also responsible for initiating FR Moca with locally, international, local, internationally renowned artists Brittany Ann Harvey and Harry. I stand here today in opposition to the proposed Fall River Arts Commission. We have built a brand and a movement around Fabric with minimal intervention from the city. We have created an art model that showcases Fall River to the region and internationally by garnering positive attention for the, for the city through the lens of art. We feel that the city does not need arbiters interfering in the creative process, and that would be counterproductive to our initiative. Part of our success has been that artists have free rein to express themselves. Fabric does not include commissioned artists. Instead, we contract artists who fit within the festival's narrative to propose works with complete artistic freedom. We are interested in this process being organic. Therefore, I oppose the formation of this commission.
Thank you, Mr. Benavides.
I am Sarah Rose, Director of Engagement at the South Coast Community Foundation. We're located at 128 Union Street in New Bedford.
Needs to be a motion to waive?
Motion to waive the rules.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Continue.
Thank you. Our mission is to mobilize philanthropy by matching donors and resources with community needs for the benefit of the region. Since 1995, the community foundation, foundation has distributed more than $50 million to, from over 200 funds for humanitarian, educational, and cultural organizations in our region. More specifically, through the Creative South Coast Initiative, which is partially funded by the BAR Foundation, we have funded FRAC and the arts and culture organizations in Fall River. Some example of that is that we have partially funded the Fall River Arts and Culture Plan, which FRAC commissioned last year. We support capacity building for organizations in Fall River that have $250,000 in annual revenue or less. Some examples of that are known surf, Yakor, Greater Fall River Arts Association. We've also arranged funding for a variety of projects, including Michael's Fabric Festival, the Bernie Getz Sculpture, that's right here at One Government Center. We are fiscal sponsors for Brittany and Harry Harvey's FR Moca, and we've recently opened a grant for, open spaces for people, and we are including Fall River in that grant round. We, in October, hosted an arts affinity tour that included 72 funders from the region and others to explore Fall River's art scene as an economic and social driver in Fall River. We work closely with FRAC, TDI, Mass Development, Fund Advisors, donors, and funders from within and outside of our region to promote and support the arts movement in Fall River. We believe the growth in the arts ecosystem that Fall River has enjoyed to date is due to the entrepreneurial spirit of the arts organizations and artists in the city who are fueling creative growth. FRAC has had a successful track record as a central organizing body for the arts and culture sector, and funders from within and outside our network have been noticing. The South Coast Community Foundation hopes that the Economic Development and Tourism Committee will work to keep the successful and positive momentum of this collaborative venture going. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak? Okay. This resolution came in...
Madam Chair, we all don't have the speaking process, or?
No.
Before we get to...
Yeah, no. Absolutely.
I'm going to try, I'm going to try to be brief.
I just wanted to clarify that it's not putting a commission together. It was looking at creating an art policy.
Yeah. I think, yeah, I'm not even sure. There's so much misinformation here, I'm not even sure where to begin. So, let me just rewind about 10, 10, better than 10 years ago. As, as Madam Chair knows, I sat on this committee, I chaired the committee, so I'm really very, very, very familiar with arts and culture tourism in the city, which is one of the reasons that Creative Arts Network was created, through the Chamber Foundation, by the way, in January, in June of 2014. And we worked with the Chamber, Community Foundation for a couple of years until we became self-sufficient and CAND created a 501(c)(3). And since then, we, for many of you are very well aware, and very, the large number of programs that we've put on throughout the city, and continue to do. And we applaud, you know, the new organizations, FRAC, that have come up since, since CAND was created back in 2014. Let me just differentiate. The arts ordinance policy has nothing to do with creating or preventing any organization from doing anything in the city. It simply sets up, as it has in other, other cities and towns, in fact, New Bedford's still trying to implement one there. It sets up a simple framework where the city and appointees can set up a framework for other organizations, including the current organizations, including FRAC, to work within the city to advance arts, cultural, and tourism. That's what it does. It's not to prevent creative people from coming into the city. It's not to inhibit artists or anything that any, any of these groups do. It's to support them. It's to provide at the city level a structure and funding, because that's one of the things, if you read the policy in there, it provides, as it has in Boston, some funding for, say, someone, a developer, it's like 1%, goes into a fund to help fund some of these projects in these cities. That's what it does. It isn't to prevent any artist or anybody else from doing anything in the city, including FRAC or Creative Arts Network or anybody else. We've all done good work. We all understand the need and the importance of arts, culture, and tourism in the city. No one better than Creative Arts Network, who was created for this exact purpose and has been extremely successful. We've spent more than $250,000 over the years, all of which is put back into the city. None of us get paid. It's all volunteerism, and the only intent of the policy is to create, on the city level, a commission. Yes, it is a commission, but it's not to stifle anybody's artistic anything. It's not what it's for. If you read the policy, it's very queer. I know Madam Chair has read it. I know the corporate council has read it. I hope Madam City Councilor has read it. I'm sure she has. That's what it does. Simply sets up a framework at the city level to support all these organizations at the city level, something we've never had in the city. And it started way back in 2012, when I was sitting with you, Madam Chair, as Chair of Economic Development and Tourism, because we recognized the need for, one, an organization, and, two, over the years, we also recognized in our interaction with many arts organizations in Boston, that we needed a structure at the city level. That's what this does. Simply sets up an ordinance to support organizations. That's what it does. So, I just want to be clear for the record, and that's all we're asking. That's what this is about. And if anybody here is unclear about that, we are certainly more than happy to sit down and explain it. And if anybody hasn't got a copy of the ordinance, although I'm sure they have, read it, because that's what it says. It's not what was presented here. So, I appreciate your time, the committee's time. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Harvey? And just for the audience, or who's ever listening or watching at home, because of COVID, we've kind of had everybody sitting out separately, social distancing, but this is a conversation with all of the members of the arts community that have come here, and they're all speaking from the microphone. Go ahead, Mrs. Harvey.
Just in response to that, we do have copies of the policy that was read. There's concern around language, you know, stating that this commission would be determining artistic merit. There is a problem there. That's what I see, and that's why I'm, you know, supporting more of a discussion around this. Yes, I'm sure there's aspects that are in support of the arts community, but the, the people that are being determined to, you know, decide whether artistic merit is in a project or not, it seems, you know, it seems unfair. And I think, you know, to just kind of accept it as it is, is not appropriate. I'm not sure why certain nonprofits are kind of fixed figures on the, the commission, whereas there are other kind of positions that are in flux based on the mayor electing them, and I believe the city council electing them. But, so I just, I think this has kind of been put together without a full discussion, and that's really what we're, or what I'm here to support today, is having more discussions around, around this.
Thank you. Council Libby, do you have anything? No. Mrs. Dennis?
Hi. Sandy Dennis, 132 Highland Avenue. As far as the commission is concerned, it would be that people would submit resumes to the council and the mayor, and then they would select. No one's going to select the commission. Creative Arts Network clearly is not going to select a commission. It's not our place to select a commission. People should submit applications, like yourself. If you wanted to be on this commission, submit an application. The council and the mayor can vet those applications. We're certainly not going to determine who's going to sit on this commission. Yeah, did we want to have a seat on the commission? Yes, we drafted it. We thought we would be, we, after, after doing art and culture successfully for eight years, we thought out of respect, yes, maybe, you don't want, the city doesn't want Creative Arts Network on the commission? So be it. We don't have to be on the commission. I really don't care. We just want educated, experienced people that understand public art, every element of public art, whether it be art in a park through plantings, whether it be through sculpture, whether it be through visual arts. I really don't care who sits on this commission, as long as they are qualified to select the appropriate public art, not private art. Private industry can do what they want on their property. It's public art in public places in the city, and I think, being a city councilor and a mayor, they have the right to have a commission and pick people that can put public art where it should be in the city of Fall River. But let me be clear, we're not looking to pick a commission. National Endowments for the Arts, Americas for the Arts, Mass Creative, they're all pushing cities and towns to implement public art policies. We've been working on this since before COVID. We put a lot of time, effort, and research into this. We didn't just sit down one day and say, "Ooh, let's have a public art policy," scribble a few things and submit it to the city council. We put a lot of time and effort into it, into everything we do, in every project we do, every event we present to the public in this city. So, we didn't just, this was just not a fly-by-night thing, and it wasn't just David and Sandy Dennis that did it. We had other people helping us. Creative Arts Network is not Sandy and Dave Dennis. I need to be clear about that, too. It is Creative Arts Network. We have a board of directors. We have volunteers. None of us get paid for what we do. But public art is being looked at on a national level, on a state level. That's why Governor Patrick and Governor Baker want public art in construction, in projects, in the cities and towns that they're developing. So, I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Mrs. Dennis. Thank you.
From the policy that I read, Creative Arts Network was a mainstay on that commission. Not that they wouldn't be picking others on the commission, but they were, you know, a consistent factor in that. That does not seem fair. In terms of the work that's already been done, there's obviously a disconnect between, you know, city government and the rest of the residents in the city. As I said, I've, I've lived in this area my entire life, actively for the past least 15 years, have been involved in cultural happenings and creating them myself in the city and surrounding cities. I am not aware of just about any of the work that Creative Arts Network has done. Not saying that they haven't done anything. I'm saying there's a disconnect. So, what they're representing is obviously different than a kind of art and culture that I'm intertwined with here in Fall River. So, to have them be a mainstay on a commission, around a policy, it just creates further inequality on what exactly public art means, you know, for the people of Fall River. So, I think we need to keep that in mind, regardless of the work that's been done. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people here that create out of, you know, little resource and necessity, and that's the kind of environment that I grew up in, a very DIY, kind of make it happen yourself, because the resources weren't there. And I think, you know, bureaucracy tends to alienate those individuals who don't understand the process and don't understand the language. And so, I think this policy would further that and not kind of help to create a more integrated, you know, approach to art and culture here in Fall River.
Thank you. Mrs. Rego?
Sorry, Kathy.
Hi. My name is Patty Rego. I am the district director...
Hi, my name is Patty Rego. I am the District Director of Viva Fall River, and I reside at 23 Ward Street in Fall River. I definitely read the policy, and it certainly is based on research. The research that I don't see reflected is the research that was done over the year by the consultant that Mr. Fraze spoke about earlier, Civic Moxie, that spoke with the actual citizens of Fall River, because at the end of the day, these are the people we need to speak about. We can make all the laws and all the ordinances we want, but we have to constantly consider who we are doing this for. And it's the people who live here, the people who we want to enjoy the city, and the people from outside the city who we want to come in and be embraced by this wonderful city that we know, but they might not know. So I do think that, you know, policies are wonderful when they're well thought out and when people are considered, all the people are considered. So I, you know, am in possession of the document, 96 pages of the Arts and Culture, Arts and Culture Plan. It just came out a month and a half ago. We haven't even had a chance to really dissect it and really present it to people, and there's a lot of really good information. There are a lot of good research that could perhaps inform this document and make it even better than it is. I don't think that, you know, this is a yes or no thing. I think it's just something that this is not, in its current form, something that I think would be in Fall River's best interest at this time. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I do think the Arts and Culture Plan is going to be a really good resource, not only for this committee, for all the arts and culture organizations, every single one of them, every single one in this room and every single one out there. And I just wish that in the collaborative spirit of what FRAC is about, that we can all come to the table and discuss this and make a plan that makes sense for everybody, including the residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Mrs. Castro.
Hi, I'm Kathy Castro, 909 High Street in Fall River. I'm simply going to ask a question, which is, FRAC was formed four years, nearly four years ago. CAN has been invited to all of our meetings. I think they attended two or three. We meet once a month. We met virtually every month by Zoom during the pandemic. And my question is, why if this was being moved forward, didn't, wasn't the collaborative efforts of FRAC involved? And why was it put forth at a time when a plan, we send out monthly notes of meetings, so everyone who gets them, and that includes CAN, knows what's going on with FRAC? Why wasn't it held back until this plan could be presented, which we're in the process now of hiring a director for, who is due to start January the 18th? Why was it put forth last April or May or whatever the date was at that time? That's really my question.
Unfortunately, I don't have an answer to that. The resolution did come in through Councilor Dion. And oftentimes, you know, individuals will contact counselors to pursue something, and counselors will put in those resolutions, but I don't know. Mr. Dennis?
Councilwoman Byrne.
So I don't really want to get into, and I'm not going to get into, Creative Arts Network, how FRAC, why FRAC was formed, not formed. I mean, I'm, I don't want to get into that. But let me just clarify. Again, we keep talking about, this is about creating a city ordinance to facilitate arts and culture in the city. This is not an arts and cultural plan. So I hear people keep talking about the plan, the plan, the plan. It is an ordinance. And if I may, let me just ask the city Assistant Corporate Counsel, is this not about an ordinance? Or have you read it, and is it more, is it a plan or is it an ordinance, as you understand it?
I can answer that. It is an ordinance. However, the Ordinance Committee referred it to this committee
Right.
to be reviewed. But you are absolutely right, Attorney Dennis. This is an ordinance, and this committee would then refer it back to ordinance after.
But this, but this has nothing to do-
I don't think it should have came to this committee. I think it should have seen from, but I agree.
But this does not inhibit a arts and cultural plan that FRAC or any other organization proposes in the city. It has nothing to do with that at all. And I don't, again, I want to just end by saying, I'm not going to get into a public discussion about, and we've had this discussion, and we had, so in all fairness and out of respect for the committee, I'm not going to get into FRAC and CAN. If you want to do that in a less public forum, I'm more than happy to do that. But we're just talking about, this is an ordinance. It's not a plan. It's not going to inhibit, it's not going to restrain creativity or arts and culture and tourism at all in the city. It sets up a simple framework for all the organizations to work through. That's all it does. And I think it's pretty clear, and I know Corporate Counsel has reviewed it. I've met with him on two separate occasions. I think we're very clear on what it does and what its intent is. It's been passed in other communities. We took a lot of this information from other communities, and I've explained this to both of you. So there's nothing in there that hasn't been vetted by other communities. We're just proposing it for, for the city of Fall River. That's it. So that's all we're asking. And I think it is more than appropriate to have it done and done tonight. We've been waiting a very long time, and we've been very patient in doing it. And we appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Councilwoman Libby, do you have a question?
I wanted to respond to the last woman that spoke.
Mrs. Castro?
Mrs. Castro, yes, thank you. Councilor Dion did put this in after speaking with the Dennis's. However, I'm in a little bit of a disagreement with the chair. The reason it was sent here was so that discussion between all of the groups could take place. There is, and I'm sure you all feel it, there is a very definite feeling of tension in this room tonight. We wanted to be able to vet this here, because I don't think this would be an appropriate conversation for the ordinance committee. The ordinance committee is, is to fine-tuning an ordinance, and this is an ordinance, which is why it needs even more scrutiny. Once something like this is put into place, it's, it's a policy for the city. It's, there was a speaker tonight, it might have been Mrs. Harvey, that, that used the word disconnect, and there seems to be a very definite disconnect between all the different artistic groups. And everyone here is in, in support of arts and culture in the city, as is the members of this committee. That's why we're on this committee. So it's a little concerning that there, that there is this divide. I think anything like this, which is why we, we send it here, needs to be not only vetted from an ordinance and policy perspective, but also to make sure everybody working for the benefit of arts and culture in Fall River is on the same page. I will yield for now.
There you go. Mr. Sullivan?
Hi, Michael Sullivan. I'm the co-CEO of One South Coast Chamber at 200 Picassett Street in Fall River. Counselor, I'm glad you just spoke, because I think what you said is very important. I don't think it's reasonable tonight to make a decision and, or to make a decision in favor of an ordinance. I, I, I'm opposed to the ordinance, but if you believe there's a need for an ordinance, then the ordinance should not be designed or written in a silo. The ordinance should be done in a collaborative fashion with all of the arts community involved in it, which is what FRAC has grown to become. And just to clarify things, because I know Kathy said FRAC's four years old, and I heard somebody else say it's two years old. It'll be three years old officially in February. And, and I know that because it's the chamber that is, is the fiscal agent for Fall River Arts and Culture Coalition. But it's, I really do believe that it's important that, that if the decision is that you believe that you need an ordinance, that this is not the right ordinance. I mean, I think that's crystal clear, that this is not the right ordinance. And others can argue and debate that it is the right ordinance, but I don't think an ordinance written by, primarily by one organization for the entire city, when you have hundreds of arts and culture organizations throughout the city, is, is, is going to be the right decision. And I think, not I think, I know, that we have raised hundreds of thousands of dollars over the last three years to be able to write an arts and culture plan, which is not an ordinance. I understand it's not an ordinance, and maybe it could operate with, under the context of an ordinance. But it's important to understand, as Patty Rego had said, we have talked to hundreds of people in the city, and we have documentation of who those people are. We wrote a letter to the Herald News back in, in June when this originally came up, and we had 33 different leaders in the community sign off on the letter in opposition to this, and, and talking about what FRAC has done over the, over the last now three years. I just, I think it's important that we understand that and, and know that this ordinance is absolutely not the right ordinance if it is what we need, that you determine we do need an ordinance. An ordinance should be written in a collaborative fashion with a lot of different people that's sitting at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
I do have one question. Is the Arts and Culture Plan, Mrs. Rego, did you say the Arts and Culture Plan is done?
It is. It's online. It's on Viva Arts and Culture, which is on Viva-
Patty, Mrs. Rego, could you come to the microphone just because they're filming this and you'll be heard?
So, yes, the, the full plan, all 96 pages, is online on vivafallriver.com, and I'd be happy to send it to the committee as well. And there's also an executive summary, which I'm looking at right now, and I just want to mention that, because I knew it, I kept thinking to myself, I know one of the goals specifically, specifically focuses, there's six, there's six goals and 27 strategies. So it's like a really, really, you know, laid out. Number five is focus on publicly accessible art, and right here, encourage publicly accessible art throughout the city. So it's a major goal of FRAC to do this. It's just, we just want to have more of a voice, and I think-
My question is, is there, in this Arts and Culture Plan, any mention of any type of policy that's needed in a city?
There is, number three here says, create a city of Fall River functional art program. It does not go to, it does not say ordinance, because I don't think we automatically jump to, we need to get this on the books. I think we need to discuss, and then, yes, of course, there needs to be some kind of, I, I think, you know, having done a lot of art in the city, you know, worked with artists, the process isn't defined, and it can be a little bit chaotic, and, you know, a little bit of clarity would be really refreshing and probably really get things moving a lot quicker. But it does not mention an ordinance. It does not mention any kind of policy, but it does specifically state about a functional art program and encouraging publicly accessible art throughout the city. And I will also say, it says, create a publicly accessible art map, which we do have on the website, and then I hope to have, be able to pass out to people so that they can go and see all the public art that we have that they don't even know about. So, thank you.
You have.
One of the things that this council has done is to try to get a tourism director, somebody who would be involved with all the arts and the tourism and all the activities that go on in the city. And, you know, there are different websites for different groups of people. If the city could put it all together on one website so that everybody knows what's going on, I think it would be better to do. Because sometimes you have to go searching for what events are going on or, and there's really a lot that goes on in the city that the general public doesn't know about. The lady that was from New Bedford, does New Bedford have a policy that you're aware of? Or an ordinance, I should say, not a policy, but any kind of an ordinance, if you're aware?
I am not fully up to date on that, but I do know it is being considered in New Bedford. Where they are in the process, I'm not certain.
Okay. Thank you. Attorney Atkins has had the opportunity to meet and talk to people. What is your suggestion on this situation?
Good afternoon. So my input here is going to be, well, first, let me just say that the law department tries very hard to not be political or involved in policy and try to give advice that's consistent with whatever the law is. So regardless of what my feelings are, one way or the other, about any particular group or any particular policy or any particular plan, my feedback is going to be exclusively with regard to the, whatever legal concerns or whatever legal support I might have for this proposal. First of all, let me also say that regardless of what the opinions are regarding the contents of this policy, the fact that Dave and Sandy Dennis endeavored to create it in the first place is a remarkable thing, and I appreciate that. Thank you for doing it, because it starts an important conversation and gave me something to, to look at and to evaluate. And without that, we're still just, you know, in a conversation about whether it should be the plan or the policy or the ordinance that comes first. And that may be where the conversation ends up. But I think the fact that Dave and Sandy took the first step to do this is, is a bold and brave thing, and I, I'm grateful for people in our city, whether you agree with them or not, that, that do that. With regard to my thoughts legally about the plan, my sole interest is whether or not this ordinance will successfully facilitate a public arts programming in the city and allow there to be some standard by which we invite and evaluate and put art in place in its very different forms. And I would say the two concerns that I have, and I raise these with the Dennis's, are the, the way in which the Fall River Arts Commission would be, would be comprised, both in the number of people as well as where they're from. I do see the potential for difficulty in continuously populating the board with people who satisfy the requirements that are set forth in the ordinance. I think the worst thing that could happen is for us to all agree on an ordinance, whatever that ordinance looks like, whether it's this or some version of this or something else entirely, and then not be able to get people to sit on the board because they either don't qualify under the requirements set forth in the ordinance or are so concerned about the possibility of either litigation or public outcry for their role in perceived or actual censorship, that we end up with a board that is non-functional. That's probably my largest concern from, just from a legal standpoint. And if I were to add something to the ordinance, it would probably be some sort of language that speaks to the possibility that somebody would seek to challenge or litigate or, or otherwise seek to disrupt the, the work of the commission because their work was, was either rejected or censored somehow, or somebody else's work was chosen, and the perception is that that work somehow was, was more socially acceptable, but, but not as creatively or artistically relevant. I think there's a lot of different things that can come up. I think the concerns over censorship in any, anytime you do this, I'm not talking specifically of this ordinance, are very real and need to be kind of dealt with, and conversation needs to be had. I think as, as an example of legislative drafting that's been highly researched and thought out, this is in many ways excellent, but in a way that is not in my purview at all, it seems like there is quite a bit of disagreement as to the order in which we should address a policy, a plan, an ordinance, a commission, and how that should come. And I would suggest that this actually does provide a much better starting point than people might realize, but some of the details might, once worked out, make this much more palatable to everybody involved. The biggest piece being the number of people on the board, which I would argue is a considerable number, and the qualifications of the people on the board, which I certainly understand and agree why those qualifications would be put in place. Not saying that I, I agree or disagree with what those qualifications are, but I understand the need for qualifications in order for there to be serious, professional, thoughtful people who are connected to the arts or artists themselves. But at the same time, once you create a board that is too prescribed, I think you run the risk of being unable to fill the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dennis?
Yeah, let me just address Attorney Atkins' concern. I think we've had this conversation, but just for the benefit of the people in the room. When that was raised, what we did say was, that would be for something for the city council. Can you look at those positions? And the reason that they are some higher-level individuals, we're looking for people who have certain expertise that can offer the city their expertise through the creation of the, of the commission. And to try to, in fact, take some local politics out of it, so we can find individuals who are, who are well-qualified to provide guidance and assistance to the city in developing their arts and cultural programs in the city. So that's the intent of the, the qualifications. And in fact, if the city council so chooses, they can change those qualifications. They can eliminate some of those positions. That's not carbon stone. My, having sat in the city council, we've done that many times, committee can look at that and say, no, we don't want, you know, some of- that and say, no, we don't want, you know, some of those positions or some of those people with those types of qualifications. But that's the intent of those, and that was the purpose of some of those qualifications, was to have people with a certain level of expertise. And just one more comment, policy precedes a plan. I think, I'm not sure where everybody's getting this idea that, you know, you create a plan, then the policy follows. Policy comes before a plan. That's anywhere and in any organization. Policy is set, just like the city does, just like the city council does, we set policy, we set ordinances, and from that flows everything else. Okay? We don't create plans and then create a policy. Policy comes before plans. That's the way it works. And if anybody wants to know my qualifications are, I am a local attorney, I've done this stuff before, sat in the city council, I understand ordinances, so I didn't create this out of thin air. Neither one of us did. It was two years in research. Much of this has been taken from other communities where it's worked successfully. It's been tested. So, just so you know.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions on the ordinance itself. One is what you spoke of on the commission. I feel like, and maybe it was in a prior draft, that there were term limits on here, where I'm not seeing those now, for each member?
I don't recall, if I may, is that a question to me?
No, I didn't see.
So I don't recall whether there were term limits in an earlier draft. I know that Attorney Dennis and Sandy Dennis have actually put a tremendous amount of work into this and revised it a number of times. And so it's possible that there were term limits in an earlier draft that I did not see or I just don't remember.
So from an, from an ordinance standpoint, we need to be very clear on what those, what that term looks like, as well as section 2.1 above it, Fall River City Council will periodically review the public art policy. I think that also needs to be defined. I think when we leave things open to interpretation is where we get ourselves into trouble. And then the only other question I had, and I'm sure it's in here somewhere, I just can't find it right now, is section 1.7, open invitational, open entry, and it says the process is open to all qualified artists. Where, where do I find what makes a qualified artist?
So I believe.
Is that in the definitions?
And Attorney Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, there was a definition of those who make a certain amount of income from arts in order to be full-time artists, but I think that might have just been for the commission. Is that correct?
There were definitions in the original, I don't know, maybe you just don't have it, but there are definitions.
So this one has definitions, but only up to P. So they stop before qualified artist.
I mean, we certainly can look for that, that's a significant concern.
I, I do have a memory that that was defined, that that was a, like a legally significant term for the purpose of the, of your proposed ordinance. I just think it may not have made it into this particular set of copies.
Okay. And either Dave or Sandy, were there term limits on here or were there terms, they were defined, weren't they?
Mrs. Dennis, could you get up to the microphone, please?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Not unlike most boards or commissions, there would be term limits, staggering term limits on it. And, I mean, this is a draft. I mean, I, I think, you know, out of respect to the council and the committees, that you can make some of those decisions. If you want to change term limits, add term limits, have them staggered term limits.
But was there a draft that you had proposed to add the limits in it?
Yes.
There was, okay.
So you definitely saw it right. And also as far as picking the commission, I mean, you can, the ordinance committee can pick their own commission. You can pick how many the city council wants and how many the mayor. I mean, you might decide that you want the mayor to make all the selections. You may decide that the council should pick all the commissions. So that, that, I mean, that would be, those are things that you could, it's a fluid document, so those are things that, you know, you can determine too.
And I would agree with you, I would just be looking for input from the art and culture groups on who those people should be. It would, certainly would not be my area of expertise to say who would be best fit to be on a commission like this. I'm glad that you have, you know, done all this work, put all of this together and given your feedback on who you believe would be a good fit for this commission. I don't have anything to, to balance that with, though. It certainly wouldn't be my place to, to make those determinations, so that would be something that I would want to hear from some of the folks as well.
I think you want to, you know, put it out to an application process too, you know, to have people submit applications, not unlike what we do, you know, with community preservation. We ask people to submit an application and the committee usually vets those applications and makes their recommendations to you and you ultimately, you know, pick those members that are going to sit on that committee.
And then I do have one other question. On section 2.3, right under it, it also refers to the, a second board, the Public Art and Design Board, which would be appointed by this board, the Public Art Commission Board. And that's when I get into a little bit of what Attorney Aiken had mentioned, is do we have enough people to be on all of these types of, of boards? I know just in the room here, we have people that are on a variety of, of boards and we need to be able to fill this. And it also does not say how many members that would be.
And, and you can pretty much determine how many members you want on your boards or commissions and pick who, you know, who you want through an application process, but if you're looking at, you know, public art, I mean, I think you want, you want people with some kind of level of sophistication with public art and in all elements of public art, you know, not just maybe sculptured art, but visual arts with the murals. And I mean, there's so many, I mean, even plantings, you know, I know that you mentioned the Olmsted parks. We've done, over the years, a lot of work with, and Lynda, you know, we've done a lot of work with the Olmsted parks in the city and Council LeBeau. And there's so many opportunities for public arts. And we did do a survey and one of the things during COVID, we found out was that most people want outdoor things and they did want public art and they do want public art in their parks. And that's what that survey told us, which is, well, another reason that we worked on this, especially during the COVID period, when we weren't able to have events. So, I mean, we clearly didn't take this lightly, but I, I think a lot of this, a lot of the decisions can come through, you know, the ordinance committee and you can make, we don't, we kind of gave you a framework, but you can make the decisions you want. And again, hey, I mean, you don't want CANN on the committee, so CANN doesn't have to sit on the committee. It's certainly not going to hurt my feelings. I don't really care. But all we know is that a formal public art policy for any city and town is a good thing. It's being told from a national level, a state level, that people want to see public art policies, not this plan and the public art policy will support any art and culture plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think, for me, part of the concern that I had addressed was the number of people that would be on a committee and where they would all be from and what their backgrounds would be, et cetera. But I've got to agree with the council vice president that I don't think that the council, even if this was an ordinance committee, I don't think that we have anybody on the council that has as much knowledge of the arts community as the members of CANN and FRAC have of what, what can be done, what some suggestions are, because you work with it every day. I would make a suggestion that we get members of CANN and FRAC together to review the policy, look at the policy and see if the policy warrants putting in an ordinance. And I know that FRAC is going to be hiring somebody to come in on the 18th. I know that the council has expressed to the mayor that we do want a tourism director as well, and there would be people who could help. And put together, what is our policy going to be and give the legal department opportunity to see what policies are in other communities, what is the policy that we need to create and all work together on that one vision. That would be my suggestion. I don't know how FRAC and CANN would get people together to have that meeting, maybe as a subcommittee to each organization, to have a group of people meet and come up with a policy, and then we could take it from there. Mrs. Castro?
Yeah, I would like to say, I would just like to say that I would definitely welcome that and I think that's a great idea. I think that bringing, I think, I personally think this is a very important decision. And it will have long-lasting effects. And I, I would certainly welcome putting together people from FRAC and people from CANN to sort of fine-tune it, go through it, come up with answers such as Councilor LeBeau was raised today, and put it forth. As Sandy said, it's not that there shouldn't perhaps be an ordinance, but there should be more consideration, I feel, given to what we pass eventually as an ordinance.
And, and I have to say that I think bringing the arts into a community really brings economic development.
Of course it does.
To a community.
Yeah.
And we, we want to do that, for sure. And, you know, over the years, I've gone to things that CANN has had, I've gone to things that FRAC has had, and they're all positive for the community.
They are.
So if, maybe Mrs. Dennis, if she and you, Mrs. Castro, could get together and get a couple of people from each of your organizations, have a meeting, review this, and I'll table it here, or I hope that it'll get tabled here, in this committee, and when you've done that work on that, given Mr. Sullivan and the appointee that you have, and certainly checking with the mayor on their director of tourism where that's at.
Exactly.
And when it's ready, to then bring it back and we can then move to looking at creating an ordinance.
I think that would, I think that's, I think that's a very good resolution to the issue. And, and certainly I believe that I can speak for FRAC in saying that we would welcome that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor LeBeau?
Yeah, I think that's an excellent suggestion. Madam Chair, I did speak to the mayor today about the tourism director, actually called, prior to you chairing this committee. I chaired this committee. I don't think you are on the council that term, but we had in, in this committee, the position of a tourism director to be vetted. Unfortunately, that administration could not guarantee that they would do the regular posting and hiring process, which is why it didn't move forward from there. As you can imagine, they also, that administration had also asked the committee to come up with the job description, which I'm not sure that, that would be our place to do so. I think that would be more of a collaborative effort between the administration and the different organizations. You're correct where we, we do need a central person to do all of these things and to bring all of these different groups and events together. There are so many things happening in the city that people don't know about. I know, I believe years ago, Mrs. Dennis used to have a calendar with all of the different events on it.
You still do?
You still do. And we need a, I think the city would greatly benefit from a centralized location. I don't know that it would actually be called a tourism director, because there are so many pieces to it, and that we would want to make sure that all of, of this is included because we have, we have great events that are put on throughout the city that sometimes just aren't publicized enough. And I think people really miss out. I was speaking to the director of the Historic Museum and he was explaining how they have bus tours coming into the city. And I, I didn't know that, that we have bus tours coming into the city and there's different stops along the tour that they do. And I would bet that there's a lot of residents that don't know that there are, there are things like that happening here. So I, I am in, in support of that, if we do have that. I don't know that it's in this year's budget or if it can be. He did speak of how that might work with ARPA funds on a contract basis. We'll have to see, Madam Chair, if that's something you want to speak to him about, but we did just have that conversation today.
We have spoken about that. I've, I've got to say, one of my favorite things was when CANN did a tour of all the homes in the Highlands at Christmas time. And you got to go in and see beautiful homes decorated.
I, I also believe the Preservation Society did that as well, correct?
Preservation.
Preservation Society, yeah.
They would just, so many things, the Underground Railroad.
Yeah.
There, there are a lot of things that happen and, you know, we have to figure out a way to get that message out there more. Mrs. Rego, you move? Do you have?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one more comment because I just wanted to address, just for the edification of everybody here, that Viva Fall River does have a community calendar that people do submit to. It's been going on for about six months now. We have hundreds of events on there that are updated by, I have a person in my employ who contacts people. We have that. We also have a section on arts and, arts and culture and also a section on tourism. We create videos. So there is a lot of work being done to let, let people know. I welcome, if whatever decision the city makes, I would love to work with that person. I've been doing this, you know, on, with my colleagues at FRAC and we've been doing it with the support of the city, no funding, I want, just want to make that clear, there's been no funding from the city, but they're fully aware and a lot of the events we do, we do with the city. But it is our goal to make sure that people know exactly what's going on and, and that's what Viva Fall River is all about. Fall River's longevity, prosperity, and making sure that everybody feels valued and that our culture is represented. So I just wanted to put that out there that, you know, if, for now, until we find something that's better or that we can enrich, viva fall river dot com is there for people to check out.
I think that's great. And I was at a, an event and I met this gentleman who lives in the Boston area, who's an artist and had heard about Fall River's up and coming art community. And I forwarded that information to Mrs. Rego to connect with him. He's looking at moving down or being more involved. So the word is getting out there. So I would leave it up to Mrs. Dennis and Mrs. Castro to put a few people together from each organization and to draft a policy that everyone agrees with. And at that point, it would just be tabled here. Do I have a motion?
Motion to table.
Motion to table. Is a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Seeing as no other items on the agenda, a motion.
Motion adjourned.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all and have a good Merry Christmas. Stay safe.